Are you ready? I'd like to call the King George County School Board's Special Meeting Work Session for November 23rd, 2020 session. Please rise and be a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Maybe seated. First item on the agenda is public and employee comment. We have Ian Scott.
My name is Ian Scott. I have a daughter in kindergarten. I come to you today knowing that you are probably going to ignore what I say if you disagree with it, but I have to try anyway. I would like to comment on the numbers that you're going to discuss tonight. You've seen them presented last week. Almost 600 students in the middle school and high school are failing. If the rule of thumb is that each grade level has roughly 300 students, that's around 1,800 students in the middle school and high school, and almost one-third of them are failing. This is not a small group of children. This is an enormous increase in the number of failing students from last year, and this is only after one quarter. And yet you continue to sit up there and pat yourselves on the back for a job well done. You may as well change your mission statement to say preparing as many as two-thirds of our students to be valuable contributors to society. But let's also talk about the numbers that you don't see on this report. The number of straight A students who are now getting Bs and Cs, the number of B students getting Cs and Ds. You've heard from parents that this is happening. In your response, most kids would love to have those grades. It completely misses the point. Even some of our best students are struggling right now and getting burnt out. But since they're not failing, they don't show up here and you don't care. It's as though colleges are simply going to stop caring about GPAs so long as their students make the claim that they used to be straight A students before COVID. Multiple studies out there prior to COVID have proven the detrimental effects on kids' minds when they stare at a screen all day long. Testimony after testimony is shared with you about how kids are struggling, whether it's an email or during the public comments. And yet you continue to say that all virtual is working so well for most. This response tells everyone who is struggling, those who have been telling you this the entire semester, that you're either not listening or you don't care because they're not in the majority. Which is funny, since you've already shown everyone that you don't care what the majority thinks or wants either by yanking the K through two option away from kids and teachers at the 11th hour. You don't care what the majority thinks when you continue to acquiesce to the same few very vocal teachers who are vehemently opposed to any form of in-person instruction for anyone, when the majority are in fact willing to come in and teach our children. You no longer represent the majority of your constituents when you continue to override their opinions to push your agenda. You're governing this school district out of fear and emotion rather than logic, data, and facts. When the CDC says that their data shows that schools are not super spreaders, that they are in fact safer locations for children to be than out in public or at home with parents who have to go out in public, will you ignore that as well because it doesn't support your agenda? Will you continue to insist that, no, King George will be different? We will be a super spreader if we let kids back in school? You will prove everyone else wrong because you're too stubborn to admit that you might be wrong. That's not leadership, and leaders do not ignore data when it doesn't support their agenda. Leaders do not tell their constituents that they can't define what the end game looks like by saying nobody knows what safe enough looks like. Leaders do not continuously change where that bar is set every time they meet to make sure that that goal is never met. Right now, you are not leaders, and our children are paying the price for that. My email address is iScott22@gmail.com for any parents listening that want to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Scott?
My name is Rachel Scott, and I have a daughter in kindergarten. I keep hearing members of the board using safe as the metric by which they will determine whether students can come to school. However, this is too subjective, and each of you has a different standard for safe. What do you consider safe? Is it PPE implemented in the classroom following CDC recommendations on social distancing? These we can meet. Is it no COVID cases in King George or in the school body? You have said you are not waiting for zero, but apparently one is too many. Is it decreasing number of COVID cases nationally and locally? This is unlikely to be met even with a vaccine. I have also heard some of you state that you don't even know what safe looks like. In that case, if you don't know what it looks like, you won't be able to see when it has been achieved, and we'll keep saying that it is not safe. Each of you need to consider not what is safe, but what is safe enough and within reason. Otherwise, our children will never see the inside of a classroom again, at least not while you are on the board. COVID is not going away, and we cannot wait for a vaccine, even if one becomes available by spring. It will not be enough to make COVID disappear. This is something the world and our community will be dealing with for years, and we need to figure out now how children can come back to the classroom so that they can learn, grow, and thrive. You only have the stats on the children that failed in the first quarter. The numbers are huge, especially when compared to last year, a mostly normal school year. These are the students that have failed quickly and does not account for the students who are failing slowly, too slow to be noticed, or even for you to care about. And these numbers don't address the elementary students. Virtual is not working for too many students. I was disappointed to hear the proposed solution to help these failing students was simply to relocate them, but to continue virtual for them. This would help lessen the impact of failing due to connectivity problems, but does not address learning problems that are due to the delivery method of instruction. Virtual learning is woefully developmentally inappropriate. I completed my masters in a virtual learning environment, and it was much harder than doing it in person. However, I chose virtual, and these students did not. It was forced on them. I was also able to do my masters in a virtual environment after having the benefit of completing my elementary school, middle school, high school, and college in person. These kids do not have that background to help them. I am not asking that you take virtual away, but that you work harder than you have been to get students back in class even now. Waiting until January to make a decision about coming back, if at all, is too late. I say working harder than you have been because though you say you are working on this and meeting frequently and making progress, the evidence says that not enough progress has been made since no children are in class. I would argue that this is actually proof that you don't actually want students to return to the class so long as COVID exists. Also, your previous decision to pull the plug on K through two returning was short-sighted, and even in the face of rising COVID cases. We could have learned from that experience lessons that could be applied to bringing other grades back. We could have learned what works and what needs to change. Now we have nothing to help us. Your indecision and fear are holding our children hostage.
Thank you. So we have no public comment from online, correct? Verify? Okay. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Richard, and I'm a resident of King George, an employee of King George County Schools, and a parent of two King George County School students who are doing well virtually. Several weeks ago, we heard information regarding cleaning in our buildings. Has any further discussion been given to improving the cleanliness of our buildings, either with additional King George County School staff or outside services? Has additional training been provided to our custodial staff to ensure that they are following proper protocol? At the October the 5th meeting, we heard updates from HR about the number of staff with medical exemptions. At a recent reopening committee meeting, the number of available substitutes for all of King George County was shared. That number does not even begin to cover the number of medical exemptions that were posted during the October the 5th meeting. I would imagine that additional staff have gotten medical exemptions since that meeting. Will the King George County School Board consider remaining virtual if staff does not exist to provide in-person instruction? As our numbers in King George County continue to grow, what metrics will be used to determine if King George County Schools should remain in all virtual instruction? Will it be a specific number of new cases in a week, a risk level from the school metrics dashboard? What level will cause in-person instruction to transition to virtual instruction? Will students and teachers be expected to switch from day to day, week to week? And will King George County Schools have a dashboard showing the number of cases and quarantines in each building? Tonight, I know that you must begin to make plans for athletics in King George County Schools moving forward. I know that many student athletes are looking forward to socializing with friends during practice and competitions. My daughter is looking forward to start of the swim season. But I know that many students are just keeping, they keep their grades up for athletics purposes. And as a parent, I would like to know how the coaches will make a determination if it's safe to hold practice while numbers in King George County continue to increase. Will practices and competitions cease if we're in the red and the core indicators on the school metrics dashboard? What about if the secondary indicators are red? Will students be punished for missing practice if they're forced to quarantine? And will student athletes who travel over Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays be required to self-quarantine before returning to practice? What procedures will be in place for contact tracing of potential exposures of student athletes? Who will be responsible for making those calls? Will it be the student who tests positive, the coach, Mr. and Mrs. Fisher, the health department? These are questions and concerns that I hope will be addressed before moving forward with any plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'd like to move on to action item, the VHSL Middle School Athletics Guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last meeting last week, you had an opportunity to hear from Mr. and Ms. Fisher regarding the new VHSL guidelines that have been put out for your consideration. So I know they are here this evening. If you have any additional questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Can I just clarify?
Yes, Ms. Oliver.
You said middle school guidelines, Ms. Pennsara.
It says middle school athletics guidelines. That's what's on the action item. Under the agenda.
Yes, sir.
I said VHSL slash middle school athletics guidelines. So I think in light of some of the comments and questions and about Parks and Rec, I think we need to have a better understanding of how Parks and Rec actually ties into all of this. I'm not sure that we quite understand how we can govern Parks and Rec sports.
Yeah, I don't, this is not asking to govern Parks and Rec. We have worked with Parks and Rec as far as their activities since the, I guess, the late summer, when there was an initial allowance under Phase Three, maybe? Phase Three guidance that we received that allowed schools to conduct activities with certain guidelines. And we simply communicated with Parks and Rec, who also wanted to offer their programs to the community in general, that it was fine, provided we all just operated under the same consistent set of expectations, either under Phase Three or through the VHSL. So I think what has been framed is that should this board then move forward with an expanded set of guidelines that are before you from the VHSL, and if those guidelines then are applied to our own programs in the school, we, as was explained, we would certainly adjust our health plan that we submit to the state. And in making the amendment to the health plan, we would continue to be consistent with Parks and Rec, and that activities that would be allowable under the VHSL guidelines would be allowable to the Parks and Rec Department. And if they chose to initiate that activity, that's up to them, but I hope that helps kind of clarify a little bit.
So in our health guidelines that we turn in, we have the other activities that are held within the schools included in that?
Yes.
Including the voting and the churches and?
Not voting, I don't believe, but we have the churches or any building rentals, those types of things. Well, it'd be just the churches, I believe. Right. So our normal, when I say normal, our pre-endemic facility use agreement form has been adjusted to then require additional cleaning, mitigation, things that we need to put in place after a building use from, say, the churches. But this is our health plan, then, again, it addresses then any activity inside the school facilities. And the way the state has asked that school divisions operate is that on behalf of, I don't want to say external, because we could have external groups like Little League or I'm trying to think of other examples, but then we also have the Parks and Rec after a certain hour. You know, our facilities, our fields, our gyms, those ancillary spaces are typically available for use by the Parks and Rec Department.
So currently, they are for use by the Parks and Rec Department? Is that correct?
Say that again. So currently?
Currently, the parks and, yes, currently are the Parks and Rec Department able to use our facilities?
Yes, in a technical, but the nature of the activities that they would do inside of there haven't been generally allowable. For instance, like an indoor soccer game wouldn't be allowable at this point, you know, by the athletics guidelines that we have right now. So by default, it almost precludes them from using the space since the activity they would want to do in that space isn't allowable.
But aren't our health guidelines based on if we have people in the schools? So if we don't have people in the schools during the time that they are here, and that we aren't having children or we aren't actively using our schools, why would they have to be restricted to the VHSL guidelines?
You said a lot in there. Our health plan covers any activity, regardless of whether it's school or outside group activity. The second part of your question, if you can repeat that.
So I just, I don't understand how the Parks and Rec would have to be, would have to follow the VHSL. Like, how is that connection made? They're not, VHSL does not govern Parks and Rec.
No, we've simply been consistent. Locally, we've been consistent between Parks and Rec activities or school activities. So if the school was able to do conditioning, and when that day came that we could do conditioning, then it allowed the Parks and Rec to do some of the activities they normally would do.
Madam Chair, in this action item, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Can I make a comment?
Well, can I make?
Yeah, go ahead, make a motion.
You can make a motion. Can I make a comment after your motion? Go ahead.
Please, Mr. Collins said first. Go ahead, Mr. Collins, make a motion.
Whatever, Ms. Chairman, it's all about you right now, always.
You're out of order. Please, Ms. Oliver.
You're always out of order, but go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Collins, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the VHSL sports for the high school and the middle school athletic program along with the Parks and Rec, and to allow in-person to return along with virtual by December 7.
Mr. Collins, we can only have one motion at a time.
That is my motion.
So, Mr. Collins, we don't have a plan to return in person by December 7? Do I have a second? Okay, the motion dies. Do I have another motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the action item adopting the VHSL Middle School Athletic, Middle School Athletic Guidelines as presented.
Any discussion?
Yeah, to clarify, high school and middle school?
Yes.
Correct.
Second.
Been second, the motion's been second. All in favor?
There's a discussion period.
Discussion, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Collins. There's a discussion period. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. So to tag on to Ms. Oliver's question. So the middle school athletics guidelines, Dr. Benson, can you or someone just clarify how those tie into VHSL? Because I don't believe unless I'm mistaken, I saw those specifically called out in the packet.
Any difference, sir?
Go ahead, a comment, Madam Chair. Let me know when it's appropriate for me to speak.
Mr. Fisher's trying to talk. Ms. Oliver, I know you have a hard time listening, but Mr. Fisher has already started talking. Mr. Fisher.
You are correct. The packet was designed without the middle school stuff in there, and that was a complete omission on my part. The intention the whole time was we would move in conjunction with each other. They are not governed by the VHSL, but what we were presenting to you guys was a joint, or a joint ask. And I should have made that clear last week, and I did. But the intention with my discussions with the middle school, we were hoping that everything works together, and that the approval was for both.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Oliver, did you want to say anything?
I did want to say something. So it's my understanding, or my, for my personal edification, that the Parks and Rec information came to us Saturday evening, Sunday morning, this past weekend, and was never brought forward as a part of the motion or a part of the discussion that they should be included in this discussion of including them in, allowing them to use our buildings for sports purposes. I'm not opposed to that, but I think that we have not been given adequate information, and that was not part of the whole school board discussion. So I'm not sure that that came up, that we should be voting on that tonight. I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, but what, Mr. Collins?
I know Mr. Clark is here this evening, if it helps. I think the intention is that we would continue to work in concert and consistently. So whatever the mitigation strategies are that the VHSL has proposed, and if should this board adopt those, would simply be relayed and then adhered to by Parks and Rec. And Mr. Clark, if you want to, if that's incorrect, then please let us know. But I know he's in the audience tonight and would be happy to clarify.
So our presentation last time included the Parks and Rec on the right side of the column.
That's correct.
I still have additional items for discussion.
Yes, Chris Clark, Director of Parks and Recreation. We have been working, we work under a number of understanding to utilize each other's facilities at times that we can't. Since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, that's been frozen by emergency. And so Parks and Recreation has had to ask requests in for each activity that we've added back into the facility. So we have added karate back, working with Mrs. Fisher, and make sure we covered everything properly. We have added the 4A Shooters Club back in. All those meet at the school board building. We have not had permission yet to get back into an elementary school or middle school, either indoors or outdoors for any program. Works with Mrs. Fisher and Mr. Fisher, both myself and my staff, getting all the information based on all of the recreation programs we've had this fall, both within our department and with our partner agencies like Little League, so that we had a full picture of athletics in this community. Because each one of those groups, KGYA, King George, Little League, Parks and Recreation, at times will utilize school properties, whether it be a gymnasium, a field, or the school board building, like cafeteria. And so we will continue to go forward presenting plans to follow the health plan because the guidance of them being in a school facility, we're going to meet VHSL guidelines, and in some places exceed them to make sure that we're safe. But that's where we've been working step by step. And so we are at the point now where we have started to advertise indoor soccer and basketball for this winter to start in January after the start of the high school season. But if we don't have permission to be in a school, there are no other gymnasiums in this county to go to other than the YMCA. So we would have to start negotiations with them possibly renting their facility.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it matter whether some of the buildings are still owned by this report and some by the supervisors? Does that matter in terms of the process?
I don't think so. I think the spirit of it is we were just trying to be consistent, that's all.
Yeah.
I certainly applaud that. Just need to be specific and clarify. That was just my question.
I'm not an attorney, but the way the lease agreements are worked out, the facilities that are used at schools are managed by the school division, whether they're owned by the county or they're owned by the school division themselves. So at this point, you all have control over those facilities because of the lease agreements.
I understand. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Clark?
Yes, I do have one. I couldn't understand Ms. Hawk's questions at all. So can someone repeat that for me?
Ms. Oliver, I ask if it made any difference in the agreement whether the school board was the owner of the building or the board of supervisors, just in terms of being clear for our discussion.
Okay, gotcha. So yes, my question is not so much a question as it is a comment. So I don't have any issue with entertaining the thought that the school buildings could be used by Parks and Rec. But what my concern is that this came to us via a social media post on Saturday. And I don't think that's an appropriate way to address whether or not we should entertain using our buildings for whatever reason. Like, there should have been some discussion between the county and the school board prior to Saturday evening about how this would be dealt with.
Ma'am, my department, to answer your question, my department has been working very closely with the school division. We have met and exchanged with Mrs. Fisher and Mr. Fisher in regards to our programs. And at the time, it was very, our information was somewhat hidden in the school board's agenda. So we reached out to our participants and asked them if they were interested in us being able to move forward to be able to contact this body based on the fact that they have control over the school gyms. There was no social media post made by King George County Government.
Yes, there was. Clearly, there was one made by you on Saturday evening. It was one made by you on social media that said, please contact your school board member. And it gave all of our contact information, which is fine. But we had not been approached prior to that about entertaining the fact that the county Parks and Rec wanted to use our buildings. We had not been made aware of that. So I just find that a little bit disconcerting.
Yes, we have. But that post was an email that I sent out that someone else screenshot and shared to the internet, into Facebook. That was not made by my department. That was an email sent to our users for their support. If one of my users took that email and shared it on Facebook, I can't, I can't control what they all do with it.
I think someone needs to take some responsibility for that. No, I'm still speaking, Ms. Pennsara. Someone needs to take some responsibility for the fact that the only way that I was alerted to this whole discussion was via social media, and I find that inappropriate.
I apologize. That's the only way you found out because it was part of the materials presented last week.
I don't think that Mr. Clark needs to.
I don't think so either. So thank you.
To.
Go ahead. Justify.
Justify that. The fact of the matter is that it was in our packet last week. It was on, I wish I had the packet with me. It was on the right-hand column, and it was there. It was the schools. We sat here and discussed it. So I don't know what goes on on social media because that's just a devil all in itself.
We discussed VHSL. We did not discuss Parks and Rec information. So thank you very much.
Okay, any other further discussion?
Yes. So I'm very interested in having the high school and middle school sports back. I'm also interested in having the Parks and Rec back. I see outside every Monday when I come in, the football are practicing. They're pretty close to each other. I see, you know, the swimmers swim. So I say all that to say this. So we say, okay, let's have all the sports back. Let's have, let's also have the kids back that are doing poorly. But how about everybody else? So it seems a bit hypocritical to say we're going to have sports and no education when our primary responsibility is education.
So, Mr. Collins, there's a motion on the table. And I'd like to go ahead and complete that motion, and for your, you can continue making your statements during your public, I'm sorry, during your board comments. So I'd like to take a motion.
All in favor, yeah. Sorry, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. So I just, maybe this is for Dr. Benson or Mr. Fisher, I'm not sure. So I know the VHSL guidelines are very thorough and well documented, so that's, I'm very much in favor of those. My only question is, so I know later on the agenda, we're going to talk about the VDH and CDC health metrics, which I hope in future meetings will translate into some metrics by which we can base decisions about reopening or remaining virtual, or what instruction looks like going forward. Hopefully, obviously, that means children in the buildings. So my question is, how, is there, I don't know if VHSL has provided any guidelines, but So my question is, how is there, I don't know if V H S L has, has provided any guidelines, but if are there, so if, you know, we approve this and sports return, is and if trends go one way or another, is there guidance or guidelines presented by V H S L that would at any point provide a means where like, I don't know, like, some of the higher risk sports would be like put on, put on hold, or is there, is it just, we approve it and it moves sports? Does that make sense?
Yes, the question makes sense. The, the short answer would be, we would follow what the school division would want us to follow. The V H S L has not broken it down into that kind of metric system. I did speak a little bit, and I believe it was in your packet, where they have classified the sports. And what that would come into play would be if the governor would say, we are taking all high-risk sports away, potentially. Then we would have our definition of what that looks like. But as far as following any metrics, or if we would get into red zones here, red zones there, that would come straight from you guys and Dr. Benson down to me.
Okay.
The only thing I would add to that is there is, it's not even discussion yet, but I anticipate there will be discussion as a region of superintendents about, because we would obviously rely on each other in terms of having an opponent for contests, that kind of thing, but there's just the beginning of discussion of should there be such a, you know, a metric or such a decision point for any kind of curtailment or pause, that type of thing. I know one of the other regions in Virginia has adopted guidelines for that region. And then other regions are now looking at those to see if they're applicable or if they would be of use to, you know, in our case, Region Three.
So.
Thank you.
We, in King George, we all know what the dashboard looks like in the number of cases. So we would be sending our students, high school students, middle school students into a region like Stafford and Spotsylvania that are at risk.
Yes.
I believe that would be the decision of the parent if they wanted to let their child play the sports or not. So again, there's, there's a motion on the table, I'd like to go ahead.
So, so, so I have, I have an additional discussion question, I'm concerned related to this. Can I speak now?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Oliver.
So who would be responsible for the cleaning, which is a big thing for Mr. Collins? The cleaning in between, so it's not middle school or high school, but now it's Parks and Rec, so they're using our facilities. Who's responsible for cleaning and making sure that everything is safe and solid before we close out a building or what that looks like on the Parks and Rec level? Like, are we paying for that, or are they paying for that, or who's taking care of those measures?
The department, Parks and Recreation Department owns their own electrostatic cleaners and has a cleaning plan to follow each contest. We will space our contests out further than normal, so allow in and out and folks to all leave. We will then clean properly with electrostatic sprayers, allow the proper contact time for the solutions, and then allow the next group in following our final game. We will then leave the facility in the same sanitized condition.
Well, I appreciate that answer. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this motion?
Can someone repeat the motion, please?
Excuse me, Ms. Oliver.
Can someone repeat the motion, please? It was a little convoluted.
Yes, can I please talk, Ms. Oliver? I was just getting ready to say. Ms. Gonzalez, you made the motion, could you please repeat the motion?
Certainly. So I move that we accept, sorry, I move that we approve the V H S L and middle school athletic guidelines as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Collins, you did not.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm, I'm for it and I'm opposed at the same time, so what kind of vote is that?
That is, you need to just decide.
Decide.
Mr. Collins, what is your vote, please?
I'm going to be for, because to get kids going back into school somehow, some way.
Okay, Chair votes aye, motion passes, V H S L Middle School, I'm sorry. Oh, I forgot, I thought I heard her say, Ms. Oliver?
Myself, yes, I said aye, I'm fine.
Aye, okay. All right, the Chair votes aye, so the motion passes for the V H S L Middle School Athletics Guidelines. Right, next, we'll move on to the information items.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Couple meetings ago, we talked about the C D C, V D H metrics, the dashboard that's provided for dynamic school decision-making, and each meeting you've had an update on the primary indicators or the core indicators, and then the secondary indicator. We have, we reached out to our local health department, and unfortunately, we couldn't get a representative to come, but I know that Ms. Fisher and I owe her a debt of gratitude, because Ms. Fisher took the time to meet with a representative from the, our local health department to review slides that they typically use for presentation to school divisions. And she is going, she's basically pinch hitting for our local health department this evening to help us understand these metrics and to bring some context to that, so I appreciate her going above and beyond and then volunteering to come to this meeting and do her best to present to you on behalf of V D H. So with that said, I'll let Ms. Fisher present to you, and together, we'll do our best to try to answer any questions you may have afterwards.
Okay, so everyone, did everyone receive a packet, a handout? Okay, so yes, this was put together by Allison Baum's John, she's the Public Health Coordinator and Public Information Officer for our Rappahannock Area Health District, which includes Spotsylvania, Stafford, Fredericksburg City, Caroline, and King George. She did put this together for us Friday and over the weekend, and she and I reviewed them this morning, so I will do my best. But most of this is information we've seen before. I just hope you provide some clarification and answer questions along the way. Next slide. So this chart hopefully is very familiar to you. This is the indicators from the C D C, the core indicators, and their color-coordinated thresholds. The title, I want to point this out kind of specifically, at the top there, C D C indicators and thresholds for risk of introduction and transmission of COVID-19 in schools. That's important to know that that is what this chart is called, because it, that is what it illustrates, what the risk level for introducing and transmitting COVID in the school system would be based on these different thresholds. They are not hard cut points, but rather larger guideposts for schools to use as one of many factors in deciding, making decisions regarding their schools. Next slide. So the three key indicators that were on that on the left-hand column are shown here, and I'm going to go into each one of these separately. Go on to the next slide, please, Mr. Vance. Okay, so the first two indicators, give a picture of how widespread COVID-19 is currently in our community. It is divided up by locality, and the dashboard, you can choose any county in Virginia, and it will give you the indicators. So the first one, number of new cases per 100,000 over the course of the last 14 days, which means that's a rolling number as day 15 drops off, today is picked up. And then the second indicator is the percentage of the tests that are actually positive in the last 14 days, again, for that specific locality. So those two indicators give you an overall picture of what the current conditions in King George County look like. And we're going to get into specifics in a second. Next slide, please. So the third indicator is specific to schools, and that is, there were, shared with you back in the October meeting from me, a list of about 20 indicators that C D C are, I'm sorry, 20 key mitigation strategies that the C D C has in place for schools, and these are the top five that they have put together to show your, our ability as a school to mitigate COVID-19. The, the thought being that regardless, to some extent, of what the community spread looks like in your county, it's not necessarily the case that your school would mimic what the county looks like for a couple of different reasons. The, the most of which is these five key mitigation strategies that schools would be implementing. So in other words, if, even if King George has a very high indicator for one or two, if they are able to consistently implement those five mitigation strategies, then you may not see the same risk or transmission in your school division, vice versa being true. If the numbers are very low in the county, but the school is not able to implement these five key mitigation strategies, there is a higher risk of transmitting COVID cases. Okay, so next slide, please. These, I'm not sure why that link's broken like that, but these metrics are available on the V D H website at that link. There's also a link included on the King George County Schools website directly to the dashboard. It does default by alphabetical order, so you have to make sure that you choose King George County in the drop-down menu. Next slide, please. So this was updated as of this morning, but I believe it gets updated at like 10:00 a.m., so this is actually probably yesterday's data. This is core indicator number one. This is how many people out of 100,000 population have been new cases in the last 14 days. It's a rolling total again, so started 14 days ago, they add it all up, and the 14th day will drop off tomorrow when a new number is picked up, so that does change every single day.
So, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, sir.
So that's per 100,000?
Correct.
Population's around 27,000?
Correct.
So that number is one-fourth of that?
Correct. That's actually was my next statement. So all data has been populated or calculated with a population of 100,000. We are approximately 27,000 people, easy math is divided by four. So for a, a look at the raw data per se in King George, take that 225, divide by four, and you have approximately 55 total cases, new cases in King George over the course of the last 14 days. And that's true for any of these metrics that you see that are per 100,000. Quick math is divided by four-ish. That's also important to note in regards to the title of this dashboard and that it is a threshold. It is not meant to be a, it is meant to be a guidepost. An example would be looking at the orange level here. It has 150 case variation from the 50 to the 200, and in a county such as King George, that is quite a bit smaller than 100,000 people, that number in raw data would be approximately on the lower end of 50 would be approximately 12 and a half new cases over 14 days. So that would be less than one case per day versus the high end of that same orange tier of 200, which would be 3.6 new cases, so almost four cases a day. So it does, there is a lot of variation within each of those thresholds to be aware of.
The C D C at this time currently recommends in-person or not-in-person school.
The C, does the C D C recommend in-person or not-in-person? To be perfectly honest with you, I'm not sure if the C D C recommends one or the other versus recommending.
I know the answer, they, they recommend in-person.
Okay. So could, could we just hold all questions, just take notes until after Mrs. Fisher?
I thought she said to answer questions as we go. But that's okay, I'll hold everything till the end.
It doesn't.
I think it'd be easier if we just let her get through it and then we'll go back, I'm taking notes.
Okay, next slide, please. This is core indicator number two, which is the rate of positivity in the last 14 days. You'll see that we are in the orange level at 9.1% positivity. Again, it is a threshold. This is less, this is less variable on, by population, because it is a percent. So the population doesn't affect it that greatly, but there are other things that affect it, such as that this is specific to King George County residents. And they may work in other places, they may do their business in other places, they may be tested in other places, but they live in King George County, and so their number goes onto our dashboard. Also affected by, this number is also affected by the availability of testing in a location, as well as what criteria local healthcare providers are using to refer a person for testing. As you can imagine, a very rural locality may not have a high percent of positive, or may have a very high percent of positive test if they are only referring those people that are very symptomatic, et cetera. So there is some variability within that data as well. Next slide. Core indicator number three, which I mentioned earlier, has to do with the mitigation strategies that schools can employ. This, you know, although V D H created this presentation, they don't actually maintain the information on what schools are able to do. And so this was their best estimate, just based on our, the information that we, you know, presented and have available on our health plan. And I tend to agree that based on the health plan we have in place, the programs we have in place thus far, our supplies, et cetera, that we could implement all five strategies correctly, but at times inconsistently, so I would agree with that, and thus left her estimate there. Next slide, please. So secondary indicators have to do with hospitals, for the most part. The C D C actually cautions against using these indicators, but they are data to use in the discussion, but to not rely on these as, you know, your primary data point. We are at 24%, which is the change in new cases per 100,000, again, because we're a small community, that will, that percent can swing either way, fluctuate quite rapidly. And then the other two are based on local, regional hospital beds that are available or taken. And again, King George doesn't have their own hospital, so it would be those in Spotsylvania, Fredericksburg, et cetera. Next slide. Okay, so these are, there are three key points that the C D C has in introducing this chart to the public. And these are three, I guess, kind of cautionary statements that they, they want to make sure people consider when using this data. First is that no single indicator or combination should be used by, by itself or themselves, and not to create hard cutoffs. S T L T is state, territorial, local, tribal officials. But for school decision-makers, but just to use them as guideposts. So it is data, but know what the data is actually telling you when you're using it as a discussion. Next slide. Their second point is, if after applying these indicators on the table, you find that your median higher or highest risk, it does not mean that you cannot reopen or open for in-person learning, but rather that the potential risk of transmitting COVID within the school is higher. Next slide. And then finally, that similarly, as I said earlier, even if you meet all core indicators and everything is in the green, there is certainly potential for spread within the school regardless. And it doesn't mean that those mitigation strategies should be ignored, but rather continue with those as well. Next slide, maybe? So in not using these data in and of themselves, they have some suggestions for other things to consider when developing any kind of plan using these metrics or others. That would include staff and students that are out sick and what that might look like, including certainly our human resources available to us. The requirement for, for masks, I actually did explain to her that we already require it for all students, so that wasn't a change for us. They are obviously very concerned, not only locally and regionally, but across the nation in regards to COVID fatigue and the feeling that some of the community spread is based upon people just being tired of COVID essentially, not complying with mask orders and not being as careful as maybe we were back in March and April, and thus leading to additional spread. In addition, they encourage schools to please think about all of the other impacts of not being in school and what that data might look like, including the mental health, socialization, equity concerns that a certain locality might, might have and how they can mitigate those impacts as well. Finally, in bold, you wanted me to make sure that I said, just understand that, you know, they're happy to answer questions and provide this data. But ultimately, the decision about reopening is a local board decision to do using this data or any other metric you find useful. And that's it, I think. Question?
Mr. Collins, did you want to go ahead and ask your questions now since you started?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Did you have any more questions?
No.
Ms. Hawk, do you have any questions?
No, I do not. Just thank you, Ms. Fisher, for all of your extra time and Mr. Fisher as well. We realize this is above and beyond the call of duty and thank you very much and express our thanks to the Health Department and Ms. John's.
Ms. Barnes, John, yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes, yes. Also, thank you, Ms. Fisher. This is great. Thanks for helping pull us together. I guess I have a question for Dr. Benson. So, so this is, this is really good, right, for discussing the core indicators and making sure there's a clear understanding of what the, what they, what they mean. Is there an intent at our next meeting or so to, to review how we might implement these to be used with decision, decision-making factors? Like I know other divisions around the Commonwealth have used these and like broken out per say, different groups of students. Say some of like your higher risk or more vulnerable populations and had like tiered levels of thresholds that could be used based on local health metrics to make decisions about which populations you bring back. Is there, are we planning for such a?
I've not planned for that yet. I think that would be a board discussion. And I am aware that there are other localities. You know, I know Loudon as an example, Fairfax to a degree. Certainly we can, if the board wants to give direction for us to explore that or propose, we'll have to take direction from the board and go back and, and, and work at that kind of task. I guess, you know, in listening to what Ms. Fisher has said and understanding and following these metrics very closely day by day, you know, along with myself screening, this is my second stop in the morning, is to check our dashboard and see how things are trending. I certainly recognize that there is a good bit of volatility, you know, in several of these metrics that are, you know, particularly the, the first secondary indicator seems to jump from dark green to red sometimes, almost overnight. So, you know, that's one of the questions I have is that should we decide or should this board want to explore setting hard and fast thresholds? I think there'd be several things that probably need to be part of that and that is, you know, for, for what duration? You know, if it's, if at any given day, we suddenly then find ourselves like we did maybe four or five days ago, where all three of the, or the two, two of the three primary indicators, the two metrics and the first of the secondary indicators were in the red zone, you know, would that then necessitate a pause? And if so, then if, if the very next day something were to change in those, you know, do we come back? You know, and I guess that's, that's the, the direction. If you, if you were going to want to utilize this dashboard in that manner, I think that's part of the discussion that we need to happen with the board.
So I know, so I know I've looked at some of the other like thresholds that other divisions have put together. I know they have identified things like windows like that, right? So if a threshold is exceeded for seven consecutive calendar days, it, you know, you do one thing or another. And then it can differ between, you know, you can have a difference between your two, your, your core indicator one and two. I know there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of variability, but I do know also that, I mean, the community, we have certainly been hearing for quite some time that it'll be really good if there were metrics by which we could gauge decisions so that, you know, so that families and teachers and, and everyone that is involved and has a stake in this could at least understand where our decision-making has come from and being based on data, so to speak, versus, you know, opinions or feelings that day or whatever. So I personally would be in favor of the board visiting this, I would say sooner, like at our next meeting rather than later, since we've only got two more meetings to my knowledge before the holidays. On January 14th, they'll be here before we know it. So I would recommend we make that a discussion item. I think it'd be helpful to see a proposed, a proposed set of thresholds based on what the reopening committees, the advisory committees have been discussing as a result of that, what that, whether it's a phased approach or whatever that reopening plan looks like across the schools. I think it'd be possible to develop a plan that, that addressed the different groups so that we would have some criteria to work with. So that's my suggestion.
Ms. Tolliver, did you have any questions?
Not, not a question, a comment. I agree with Ms. Gonzalez that I think we need to have some criteria for reopening schools and the direction we're going in. I also thank Mary Fisher so, so, so much for, it looks like a lot of hard work was put into her presentation and it was very appropriate and very necessary and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Hawk?
Benson, I guess in conjunction with Ms. Gonzalez and your information, are the subcommittees tasked with working on that threshold or standard? I mean, I sort of, I'm assuming that, but are they currently in process?
Yeah, and I think, I don't want to, I think Ms. Fisher, they've had a preliminary discussion about the topic. I won't say that they've, you know, I don't want to speak for them. I've not been in their meeting, but I think that the topic has been explored. And we're all, and I agree, you know, it'd be great to have, you know, at this point, you know, this would be an objective thing that people could follow and, you know, we could all watch kind of thing. At the end of the day, you know, the decisions about local level, or decisions being made at a local level using the data, but not necessarily using it in a manner that that could get you into situations, especially in a smaller count, a smaller division, where you're forced to, to take action that may or may not be appropriate. And I think back in our day that we had a, you know, we had some anomalies that crept in. We had one Monday where I, I nearly fell off the couch when I saw, but then later I discovered that there had been kind of a delay in reporting some of the data. And when all that was dumped in simultaneously on a certain day, it was three days of data and that's what caused, you know, the blip on that dashboard. So I guess I'm just, I'm wanting to make sure that if we, if we go down that road, that there is still some latitude for the board to consider the data in the context of anything that may be analogous to that, to that chart. You know what I mean? There could be ancillary aspects of the decision that still need to be considered above and beyond simply an objective, well, we have three reds now, so it's time to do this kind of thing. I, I don't want to speak for committee.
No, no, I, I'm, I'm happy to speak on this a little bit. We did, we have been having this discussion as part of the Health Committee as, you know, just one of our, our agenda points. Last week, we looked at two plans that we are aware of and that's Fairfax County and Loudon County, both very, very large divisions in comparison. But just, just to help us wrap our heads around what that might look like in King George, we actually mapped out, this is what Fairfax's plan says, which is they have like 30-some groups that they've divided out across eight or 10 tiers and each one has their own metric. And it's very complex, which I assume is very necessary up there with 100,000 students. Versus Loudon County, which is essentially if it's under, if it's not in the red, then schools will remain open. If the metrics move into the red over the course of 14 days, they would then move revert to virtual or remote or et cetera. So in comparison, we, we looked at that in King George and what that would have looked like. Under the Loudon plan, we would have once or twice had to start counting those 14-day consecutive days. But at no point would we have had to close today. Under Fairfax, there was a week in August, because they follow a seven-day cycle rather than a 14-day window. In Fairfax, if we were under their plan, there would have been a week in August that we would have closed, but it was prior to our August 31 reopening. And then actually this past, it was the day of our meeting, so I believe Wednesday, we would have closed because we would have been in the orange for seven consecutive days. So we have, you know, looked at that just to see what that might look like in King George. And I actually spoke with Ms. Allison today about the same and whether any local, region, region schools were doing it. She said, you know, early on she had heard some discussion, but not anything recently because of all of the, you know, fluctuation that happens. But obviously it is the data that we have to work with, so you just have to decide what to do with it. She also heard a couple of recommendations from them were for the timeframe to be 14 days minimally as, as far as a window. And, but to avoid anything that would cause, she referenced flip-flopping where you're open for a week, you close for a week, you open. She said that is much more traumatic to everyone. And I, I guess to what Dr. Benson was saying, to leave yourself some, some leeway in deciding whether in fact it is appropriate to open or close based on whatever metric you determine.
And I guess just to extend what I was saying before, I, I, this is not meant as critical to any of the division that's considering or is adopting such a thing. But if you, then you get into the, well, for how many days? You know, if I, is it three? Is it five? Is it six? Is it 14? And I don't know of any other metric that would inform the number of consecutive days needed to then, you know, initiate a trigger to, to move one way or the other. And I guess what I foresee is that, okay, we settle on if it moves to this color, but then we're going to have the very same kind of subjective call on, well, for how many days, you know? And then I guess that's the debate. That's, that's kind of framing what the potential debate or the, or the considerations would be to using the data in that manner, rather than, and I get it, it's harder to use the data to simply infer qualitatively. It's easier to use the data to say that if we get so many days in this color than, than quantitatively, that, that is then our, our cue to move to a different modality of instruction. So I see the validity on both sides. I just think that we have to be careful not to, not to force us into a decision corner that doesn't allow for, again, those ancillary aspects of some of this data to be taken into account before we actually say this is what will happen if X happens and Y happens kind of thing.
So Dr. Benson, I have looked, let me rephrase this. So all of these indicators are based on the community, the entire community. And I believe there are some jurisdictions, especially for private schools, that they look at the numbers based within the school system, determining when, whether or not they will go back to 100% virtual after they open up. Is that something that you or your staff has looked into those indicators and from those schools? I believe, didn't Spotsylvania do that as well? Then they decided to go back to virtual when they met a certain number of cases within their school community? Not the overall community?
Yeah, I believe that was the schedule, talking about this week. They, they are now remote this week. I think that was scheduled beforehand. I don't think that was contingent on a number of cases necessarily.
Well, I know that there are some other jurisdictions outside of our state that has looked to, looking at indicators within the school community, not the overall community and using data that shows that the community numbers did not increase once they had in-person. Not, I'm not saying all of them. I'm just saying on a few that I have looked at. So that might be an option.
Yeah, I'm happy to take any information you have. I know of some that as a, as a reactive measure. And certainly if we got in a situation where, you know, we certainly hope we don't, where we would have a number of students or staff and staff affected or in quarantine, where we may have to then make a decision in a reactive sense. I don't know of any divisions that have used that data in a preemptive type fashion, I guess. But I'm happy to look at anything you have for pass along to that subcommittee.
What is your question, Ms. Pence? Here, I don't understand.
I didn't ask a question. So Ms. Tolliver, did you?
You did. You, you asked a question of Dr. Benson. So what is your question? I'm not sure I understand your question.
I asked.
Your comment.
I asked him if they have looked at any data for choosing any indicators within the school community and not as a community as a whole. Any other jurisdictions around us have done that. So.
So don't, don't dismiss me. I'm sorry. Don't dismiss me. You asked a question and I asked a clarification of the question and then you act like you didn't ask a question. I'm so tired of your nonsense.
Okay.
Yeah, I said that publicly. You also asked about private school. You also asked about public school. So let's talk about private school. You want to talk about private school?
Ms., Ms.
Ms. Tolliver, you're out of order for the second time.
No, I'm not. I have the right to ask a question just as you do.
Stay with what we're doing.
You asked a question and you brought up private school. I have the right to ask a question just as you do. I have the right to ask a question just as you do.
You do. And you, when you have your turn. So do you have another question, Ms. Tolliver?
Yeah, my turn is you, you brought up private school. So what is your consideration about private schools?
I did bring up private schools. I never brought up private schools.
Can we stay?
Okay.
Just trying to stay with this question. I had another question for.
Okay, all right.
I just want to say that I know this is very difficult because I know that you're very good at your job and trying to answer questions that you may not have answers to is hard.
Oh, so now you're talking to me. So I can talk to you and that's not okay, but you can talk.
Third time. I'm trying to talk. There is no reason for you to continue to interrupt. You've had your time. I'm, now my time.
Bring it, bring it.
So I, I know that a lot of these numbers, they, they have that probable and I don't want to call it a factor or anything, but do any of these, do you know or anything about that? Or if that would indicate any of the probable numbers of cases? Like when they do these indicators, those probable numbers are not included in those indicators. Is that correct? Dr. Benson, we talked about this earlier. Maybe you can help. That is correct.
And the example you showed me simply, I don't think it had anything to do with, you know, risk of transmission, which is really what the school-related metrics are, are trying to inform. So the, what you showed me, I think, was from the general, you know, the first, on that dashboard, that same landing page, I guess, there's another radio button that can give you statewide data, not necessarily specific to, to schools. And from what you showed me, you showed me a total number of cases. And then of those cases, there was a, there was a number that could be assumed to be confirmed that COVID was the, the cause of death. And then there was a number that was probable. And I, and the way we understood it, I guess together, we said with that, what that means that there's a lesser number that had secondary elements to it, I guess. I'm getting out of my swim lane here.
Right.
But that it couldn't be confirmed that that was the sole cause of death, but that it was probable that COVID contributed to the death.
So I think that would be another subject that we could possibly look at, those numbers and the differences to see if we would want to include those in, in, indicated our decision in making.
I guess, you know, I don't know how that's relevant though to, to community spread. I mean, that's really what we're, we're looking at is to try to mitigate spread, you know, to host school in a safe manner at the same time that we're mitigating risk and spread. So I don't know, I guess I just would, all due respect, I don't know what relevance and after the fact number like that would have with decision-making moving forward.
Well, I think that's a good question of whether it should or shouldn't. So, and maybe we can just reach out via email and ask them to clarify what that means. And I, I mean, they have it specified, you know, called out differently on, you know, separated on their website. So if they have it separated on their website, there's a reason for it. And, and I'm just not understanding why that's part of that and how it should affect the numbers or should it? That's all. And maybe just a, a simple email asking them to clarify that, I think might be.
Sure, I can get with Dr. Benson tomorrow so he can show me exactly what you're talking about, just so I'm clear. And I was going to follow up with Allison tomorrow anyway, if there were other questions. So I can certainly ask her what, what the delineation is for that and how it might impact school numbers. what, what the delineation is for that, and how it might impact school numbers, et cetera.
Okay. And I, I also understand that we have that multiplier, because we only have 27,000, and everything's based on 100. But I still would think that our risk, even using the multiplier, would be somewhat lower than that, because whenever you have more people in an area, your risk is automatically higher, so just think we need to.
Well, that is your opinion. That is your opinion.
You're right, that's my opinion, and I'm allowed to.
I'm out of order. I'm sure I'm out of order. That's your opinion, and that's not appropriate to share that.
You allowed everybody to talk? Everybody has been allowed.
You don't want me to talk? Cut me off every single time I talk. So that's your opinion. That's your opinion.
Silence her. Does anybody wish to make a motion? Because this is getting out of hand. She's really out, out of order. Okay, all right. Let me look real quick. I believe that was it. Do we have any other further questions?
I do.
Gonzalez?
Yes, Ms. Mantra. Um, so, so I think I wanted to revisit the, the comment about, that Dr. Benson was saying that, like, recognizing the challenges with these thresholds, and how you would delineate, you know, like, like if, if we were to pass a threshold, how long would we remain closed, or vice versa? I think, I recognize those are hard decisions, but I think that would be the point of having a plan developed, right? And so you could, that could all be included. And truthfully, I think, though, like, the 14-day, like, to Ms. Fisher's point about not flip-flopping, like, obviously, that's, that's, that's a concern. You know, like, the CDC guidance for, you know, like, self-isolation and quarantine, if you're exposed, that sort of thing, tends to lean towards the 14-days, right? So it would seem to me to make some amount of sense if, if we were open and things trended towards the red, and we were to close at 14-days, would be a good standard time, because that would be, if there were exposures and things, that's the period of time that is normally advised, that folks, you know, self-isolate anyway. So that would, you would kind of kill two birds with one stone. I'm just thinking that maybe that's worth considering. And then as far as the concern about crossing a threshold and then being forced to make an action, I guess I don't see how, if we were to set, if there was, if there were guidelines to be set and thresholds that we wanted to use as decision-making points, I don't see that that would necessarily, like, have to force our hand to say we're going to close, or we're going to remain virtual, or we're going to reopen. But I think it would, it would trigger a decision point, at which point it could be considered. And it would at least, it would trigger that we needed to talk about it, or you needed to make a decision or recommendation. It wouldn't have to say, we're definitely closing when these things happen, but when we cross this threshold, we're going to consider it, and I think that's the distinction.
So just, um, not trying to play what if, but if, if we got to that point, then, knowing that it'd be time-sensitive, I mean, that would, would you foresee that being a decision then I would have to make? Or would we have to pull together a 11-hour school board meeting to then make that decision?
I guess I would think it could be either or. It seemed to me like a snow day. It would be within your power to make that decision, or if you felt that you preferred our input, we could certainly have a meeting too. I think you, I would, I think it could go either way.
I would suggest that it be, that the decision process be very similar to your decision about a weather-related day. Not, not that they are in any, any way comparable, but that the process might be, because you would have the data and the context to marry those two.
And I would add that perhaps the, the point, I think Ms. Pence, I'm right about the case numbers in schools. I think that would certainly be something that we could, that you could use to help in, inform the decision, right? So if we crossed thresholds, and based on our criteria, we should consider closing. Maybe we haven't had any cases in the schools, and maybe that's a good reason not to close. You know, I don't, I'm sure there are factors, but I think all that could be tied together into a plan that made sense, and was actionable, and could at least be pointed out when a decision needed to be made.
Okay, are there any other further discussions, questions? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? No, we don't, we don't have board comments on this. It's one thing I wanted to change on the work session agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're now adjourned. Oh, Ms. Tolliver.
Hello?
Yes, we had a motion to adjourn?
So adjourned, so moved.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your.